Okay. Okay, you guys ready? Okay, like to call to order the Alpine City Council meeting for September 23rd, 2025. We will start with a roll call, starting with Councilman, Councilwoman Hanneman.
Chrissy Hanneman here.
Brent Rumler present.
Kelly Law present.
Jessica Smian present.
And then we'll have a pledge led by, I'm sorry, we'll have a prayer by Councilwoman Hanneman, followed by a pledge led by Councilman Law.
Dear Heavenly Father, grateful that we could gather this evening and blessed that we'll make good decisions and represent the best outcome for all. Grateful for the country that we live in and help us to be mindful of the needs of others and bless our leaders. And grateful for the resources we have to provide healthy and safe place for all of us to live. And we say these things in Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to item number two, the consent calendar. Are there any questions regarding the items on the consent calendar?
Give me one sec, I had two questions.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, one was on the cutting of the concrete. I looked at the streets and what do we do when there's something significant that isn't listed on your sheets? How do we handle that and what's the timing of it?
So, we, we have a list of concrete replacements. So, we'll take their list, they'll recommend, maybe there's 10 places within that 10 pages or whatever that say the concrete needs to be replaced. We'll get that done as soon as we can through our concrete replacement program. So, it's, it's too severe to just cut the trip hazard off. For example, anything over, like concrete, our older concrete's four inches thick, our new is five.
Mm-hmm.
If it's a two and a half inch difference, the way it's raised up, it's a replacement. So, anything over two inches is replacement, up to two inches, most of the time they can cut it.
So, I, maybe I should have explained that, but I noticed a very big like gap, like probably five inches on a different street, Matisse, but it's not listed. So, how, how, how long does it take to do, get to that type of stuff?
Matisse is one that we're going to be bringing back to the council because we're going to need your support. Yeah, we had a meeting with them a while back and it didn't go very well. It's been probably two or three years ago.
Okay.
But it's.
It's significant, yeah, it's severe. It's, it's a very big hazard.
It's the full depth of the concrete.
Yeah, and now there's a gap even, yeah.
It's a good jump.
And, and a big liability for us. Okay, I had one other question, what was it? I, I need to find my glasses.
But just, just to back up on that, so we select an area each year. We, we usually try to pick an area where we're doing overlays that year or the following year. Sometimes we don't get all the way through our area that we planned, but other times we'll say this is priority one for us for this year, two and three. And then they, they'll go out and do a survey and come back and say, they give us a little GIS map that says we can go this far with your $40,000.
I see. So, they target it and then do as much as possible?
Yeah, I mean, if it ends up being, hey, for $42,000, we can finish your last street, you know, instead of 40, then we'll usually say, yeah, go ahead and, and finish that out.
Okay. The other one was, I, I need my glasses. There was the one where we made a change in the Sunset Mountain machinery.
Yes.
So, when we, when we make that change, then we'll see that in a later agenda to approve the extra money?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just do a budget amendment.
Okay.
We're, we're going to have a few, like, for example, the grant that we received for street maintenance came in after our budget was approved. And so, we'll do a budget amendment to bring that million dollars in and another million in expense.
Okay.
So, we'll true that up.
So, even though we're increasing the cost, we don't have to make a motion to amend the budget now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just true it up in a budget adjustment, probably in January.
Okay. That will do, that, those were my two questions and I can.
Anybody else?
Just one, Chrissy asked the other one. Ryan, on your awesome emails that you got in here, the changing the amendment to have the fee paid before an application is considered.
Yeah.
Submitted.
Yeah.
Does, how does that affect the 10-day period?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
So, the 10 days starts when?
Yeah, so, when, once we get for a land use appeal, it's once, once we render a decision on whatever the, the question is. So, if it's, whether if it's city council or staff or planning commission, once a decision is rendered, they have 10 days to appeal that. So, it doesn't, it doesn't change the days. In the state code, it's, the minimum is 10 days, so we, we could do more, we could give them a bigger, bigger window to do that, but that's not, that's not part of this. We just, all this is saying is that an application has to be complete and the fee's paid before it's considered.
Yeah.
So, within that 10 days.
Okay.
That's just the window.
So, it's not, it's not shortening their window or anything like that?
Nope, nope.
Gotcha.
Would it be a disadvantage to extend the window since that's the minimum?
We, we can, if you want to extend it. My understanding is anyways, the 10 days is the minimum and we can extend it for, you know, as long as we want.
Do you happen to have any idea what other cities do or maybe our attorney? Do you know?
In my experience, 10 days is common.
Is there, but my question was, is there any disadvantage to extending it?
Just that the matter doesn't get resolved as quickly and.
Most people, yeah.
One of the reasons to do it is to exhaust administrative remedies.
Mm-hmm.
If you need to go to court, so by putting that off longer, that just, it makes it more difficult to exhaust those remedies.
I see. Okay, thank you.
If one, if one party has some kind of project or something.
Right, no, that makes sense, thanks.
One of the comments by the resident was, it was hard to find and maybe it should be part of our standard practice to let the people know when the decision is made that they have a 10-day period?
Yeah, we, we put that at the end of the letter. We say, if you want to appeal this, you have 10 days and this is how you do it. Most of the time, like, in the, the two times we've had it happens, I've been here, they, if they want to appeal, they call and they say, can you just send me the form? And that's, I think in some cases, we even send them the form, but we, we do, that's how we end the letter. You have, you have 10 days to, to appeal this if that's the route you want to go.
And the 10 days starts from the date of the letter?
When the decision was rendered.
When the decision's rendered.
Yep.
But there won't always be a letter, right? Steve, I mean, this was a little bit of a different case.
No, and maybe that's, well, the case you might be referring to, there was a letter. It was a memorandum or it was a written decision. And that's very typical, but if the planning commission, for example, on a conditional use permit application rules against the applicant or there's some condition that the applicant wants to appeal, you know, they're just, they're just presumed to know that there's an appeal period and they ought to look up the ordinance and find out what it is, but.
Okay, we can't understand you. Can you repeat that, please? You're cutting out. I think it was an accident.
Apologies, that was a mistake.
Okay, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Hanneman, seconded by Councilman Rumler. Let's proceed with a roll call vote, starting from Councilwoman Hanneman.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Brent Rumler, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Jessica Smian, yes.
Okay, we'll proceed to item three, which is public comment. I have two public comment cards. First will be Brian Irving, followed by Just Will. Okay, please come up, state your name and your address before you make your comment. If we could have three minutes on the clock.
Brian Irving, Matterhorn Drive, 371 North Matterhorn Drive. I am interested in what's happening with the water. There's a water plan that was approved over four years ago and hasn't been funded. I'm just wondering why it hasn't been funded and where we stand today.
So, maybe the public comment should have been clarified. Public comment is an opportunity for you to speak. If you want further information, that's going to be taken offline, probably with staff or if you want to meet one-on-one with city council. But this is a comment period, not a question and answer period. Sorry, that wasn't clarified.
So, I'll, I'll let that linger in the room for a minute, but it's, it's really annoying for me as a citizen to get a robo-call knowing that we have a water delivery problem, not necessary, not necessarily a water availability problem. And if we voted to have a solution four years ago, it's super embarrassing to have robo-calls coming to the citizens when there's a solution that's been voted on but hasn't been funded. And now that, because of that, the cost to drill that well is three times as much as it was, so 1.5 to maybe four-plus million. And now we have also higher interest rates to pay for borrowing or bonding for the city. And that's just, it's so unacceptable to get out this far and have that happening without any kind of a solution or follow-through. And that's one of the things I have a question about also on the, and Chrissy, thank you for taking the time to put this together. I'm just trying to figure out.
It was a team effort.
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out, on the revenue side, you've got water or, sorry, waste collection at 730,000 and on the expenditure side, you've got garbage at 758. So, is that, they don't say the same thing, but it's assumed to be the same thing, but we're losing money on the garbage side by 28,000. So, we're not charging enough for the garbage or is there water mixed in with this line item in here? I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but.
We'll, we'll look that up and.
And I guess part of that, part of my point here, and Will, you're in the room, but I'm going to say it anyway, I don't think you're charging enough for water. There, there's some issue going on that we can't maintain or upgrade or do what we ever got to do to make this water thing work. And I know it's, it's progressive, great, if you want to water more, you get charged more, but I just feel like there's an opportunity for the city to deliver something that we can't get anywhere else and make sure you're covering your costs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Will, if you can come up, state your name, your full name and your address, please. And then Ryan, if you can put the clock up.
Will Jones, Seven Health Court. And just after having Brian come up, I'm thinking, okay, so you know, I didn't know he was coming to make that comment and we had no collaboration whatsoever with one hell what I'm going to say. It's also on water, it's on irrigation water. As farmers, we have quit watering right now. We quit on the first of September with our PI as far as our fields, alfalfa things, anybody who's alfalfa, we quit then. If you have a pasture, you're supposed to quit by the 15th of September. This year has been an interesting year for the irrigation people. First of all, it needs to go in understanding that Shane and our friend Greg, they do a masterful job. They're, they're doing everything they can and they're on it. I mean, Greg and I are talking sometimes once and twice a week to coordinate, to understand, and you've got an incredible cooperation to this point with the irrigation people. We have turned off, when you guys were asked to cut back 20%, 15%, we were at 50%. And I had pretty good cooperation. There were a couple that needed to be reminded, but after they were reminded, sometimes three times, they came in cooperation. The other night, just beyond the time, I was watering because I have a field that's not done and I get a call two days later, apparently, from when I thought the water was off, my, I had made a bad communication with my worker, it didn't get shut off. Greg called and asked me to turn it off and I, I appreciated that. But at the same time, let me tell you why I was really upset. Sunday morning, I go down and change my water. Monday morning, I go down and change my water. 22 violations from my house to my water. It's not a mile. And I had 22 violations. So, my, my point tonight, and I'll summarize with this, is the fact that what's going on, and Brian is hitting on some of this, we shouldn't have to be doing this, but this year, we had to, guys. The water source was there. The, the streams are absolutely not there, where the flows are not there, that, there's no question. And we get that as irrigation, guys. We get, we know that in a normal irrigation year, we wouldn't get it. But the challenge is, we feel like now at this point, we have got to start the enforcement. And if the enforcement's not going to follow, we're not going to get there. And we have got to do it and it, it's just got to be done. Nobody should water from Sunday to Monday night. And yet, 22 violations in a mile? We need some help and we need your support.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item four, reports and presentations.
Okay, so, financial report. I have a sales tax graph that came in late last night and I was at a conference in Sandy today, but revenue was like 160, let me see here, just shy of 163,000 for the month. There's a lot of money still sitting in our project funds, but in the next couple of city council meetings, there's going to be some big expenditures as projects finish up, particularly our street projects and some other things coming in. There's just a lot of projects going on right now in our, well, our parks getting the equipment here. Right now, our guys have been working a lot of overtime to keep up with the paving project. And a lot of work in Moyle Park with the approval of this paving bed. We anticipate that will actually be paved next week and I think it's going to look, I think it already looks really sharp and awesome up there. When we get a landscape, it'll be even better. So, you will see some funds start to go out as we get payments approved and, and bring those back for approval. I think everything else is going well. Our audit is wrapped up. We didn't quite have enough time to have the audit presented to the finance committee before this meeting, so it will come back on the 28th of October. So, we're working to schedule the meeting. I need to talk to Chrissy about that. There's one conflict on the day we planned and, yeah, so look forward to that. You'll get that in the packet or we can send it out as soon as we have it. And, any questions about what's going on with finances? I think everything went really well with the audit and, and it's, I don't have the document yet, but from what I've told it's, it's, everything's clean, so.
All that work that the gas company is doing or did, that's all, that doesn't affect us at all. We don't have to do any work or.
No, that was our metropolitan.
Our people aren't redirected.
No.
They cut down those beautiful trees all by themselves and hauled them away.
They were actually apologizing. It's, yeah, what, I'm like, I'm going to find this agreement to see what it really says and it was, I, that's why I sent it to the council. It was very plain in there. Why they didn't make the trees get cut down when it initially went in, I don't know. But I was surprised, as surprised as anyone, so.
I was, I was walking by there this morning, I'm like, hey, this is a great place for another bridge, just put a bridge in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or ask them to plant new trees.
Yeah. Anyway, things are going well, I think.
During public comment, they talked about the, the little insert that went out in the newsletter, so just wanted, that was very much a team effort. Heidi did a really good job cleaning that up and the actual full report is available online and through a link in the newsletter. So, just want to, since we're talking about finances, say, we appreciate that the staff helped fill in the gaps, so. And if you haven't seen our full citizens' report, I encourage you to go online and look at it because I know we've been doing other things, but.
So, as we move on to action items and discussion items, there is going to be a slight change in the agenda. The, we appreciate Chief Beck being here, but he has prior commitments, so we're going to be starting with item B and then move to item A after item B so that he can be involved. So, we can start with consideration for approval of the Alpine Fire Station, the concept plan.
Mayor, if I can just say, we have Chad Jones with Navigate here with us in person tonight. Chad Littlewood with Babcock Design is on Zoom, I think, is he connected up? And then press and reading as well with Navigate is on Zoom, so. Let's see, get to the right. Okay, so, we've had some really good meetings with our team working on the fire station. We took some of the past feedback back from the council, had a few iterations. There was one more because Chief Patton was out of town last week when we met and he had a few comments. So, the plan, the concept plan that went out with the packet Friday, there's an update to that and some of it's just moving some rooms and things around within roughly the same footprint. So, one thing we want to get out of the council tonight, if you have any feedback that you want addressed with this concept plan, we committed to bring a concept plan to the council to approve before we, we move things forward, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And I will tell you that the RFP is out. We had a meeting, a walkthrough with general contractors Monday and we have a second one scheduled for Thursday. And then the RFP is due the third, the second, so soon. And we'll talk about when that will be awarded. I think it's going to be on the October 28th city council meeting, so. Interest has been really good. I think we've all been pleasantly surprised with how many contractors have downloaded plans and attended and, and there's a lot of interest out there. So, hopefully that will lead to us getting good prices on this project. As we went through the, some of the things that came up that we will definitely need feedback from the council on, the orientation of the building, if you have any specific feedback on the floor plan itself, the driveway alignment, the current plan shows it coming off of 100 East. And then discussion about parking, both for the fire station and for the community center. And then this would be a little further down the road, but any feedback now, I think, would be helpful, just the aesthetics of the building and how, how we want to tie it into City Hall where it's on the same block and it's, you know, both, both city buildings, how close do we need to be as, if there's some kind of a connection? I don't, I don't know that we want to follow the design exactly because it's, you know, 30 years old or whatever, so. And this building's older, but, so, any feedback there? And then also, so with the public facility zone, our properties and then school properties were, were moved into that zone. But reviewing that zoning, it says that the gateway historic guidelines still apply. And so, we'd love some feedback on how you'd like that applied to this building. So, I think it'd be beneficial to pull up, right? I copied you on the email last night, right? With that update? I think if we can pull that one up and maybe, I know there's a few questions that have came in to me from council members, at least from one. We can maybe go through this with Chad, some of the thoughts, codes as far as how many bathrooms in the community center, things like that, and then maybe we can talk about parking and just your overall thoughts on this concept plan. Yeah. And as, as far as detail, just remember this is a concept plan. What we're trying to do is get to the next step where we can get into the schematic plan, right, Chad? Chad's?
No, you're 100% correct.
Chad, I'm finding this latest drawing from last night to send to Ryan so we can pull it up here on the screen.
And, and honestly, I think for the context of the council and the purpose of this meeting, the, the one on screen now would probably be sufficient. The only updates that's different from this was that of Chief Patton calling and having a few tweaks he wanted to make. So, it's not going to disrupt the kind of conversation we're trying to have around it tonight if that's most feasible, but whatever's best.
Yeah, go for it.
So, we, we could take a big approach, I'm not sure how much depth you guys want to go into, but I appreciate what Shane said, this is exactly what he said, it's a conceptual plan to kind of name square footages and program, meaning functions of the building to accommodate the fire department. So, what we've done is just kind of isolated the far plan west area for the senior community center. Obviously, the apparatus bay is going to remain as is with some slight altercations, meaning we're going to increase the apparatus bay doors to accommodate the larger equipment. And then everything on the plan east of the apparatus bay is intended to be new construction. So, there'll be some phasing that'd be involved that Chad Jones of Navigate can speak to, basically ensuring that the functionality of the fire station isn't disrupted from day to day. But the only way to do that is by phasing it. Happy to answer any questions of the program, I don't know if it's necessary to walk through the program, Shane, I'm happy to do that, but you tell me what you'd like to do and I'll follow suit.
I think one of the questions I received, Chad, was, is there, is it a code requirement to have the four restrooms in the community center side?
Sure. So, the code will dictate how many toilet fixture items we need to have and it all comes down to type of occupancy, how will you rate the building, meaning if we isolate a community center from the rest of the building, then just that component will be categorized and we have to respond accordingly for that type of use. Because it's an assembly space, it does require a bit more fixtures than what is typical for like a business occupancy or mercantile. But like you said too, that is something that we would fully define in schematic phase. My gut, based on experience, says that four is probably the minimum, especially if we go with what's shown on the plan now, which is a unisex approach, meaning single-use, single-occupant restrooms.
Okay, did that come up? This is, yeah, this, uh, no, this is still the, there you go. Yeah, that's it, Ryan, just pull back. Chad, one other thing, maybe just for the council, it is kind of within the room, but maybe just the thoughts on the partition in the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, the reality with the partition is, especially with the confined, I'm sorry, that's not the right phrase, not the confined space, but the existing space of the, of that square footage, if we're not going to expand it, we're essentially building within that shell. And so, if we want to have the adaptability to use an operable partition and utilize two different spaces in that room, the current existing entrance to the north is really difficult to utilize in the sense that anybody that comes in when it's in partition mode, lack of better terms, is going to have to walk that space. So, what we're proposing now is a new vestibule added to that west elevation that would allow, when it's partitioned, to have occupants enter either in, you know, north space or south space. A previous version we looked at showed an isolating corridor that beats down to the restrooms and the warming kitchen. It's a tough sell with the existing space, so what we're landed on right now is kind of a compromise of knowing that that operable partition went in use. It's a tough sell with the existing space, so what we're landed on right now is kind of a compromise of knowing that that operable partition went in use. It would be common knowledge that the north space would be open and exposed to the south space if occupants needed to use restrooms or if warming kitchen suppliers needed to bring food or wares out to the other spaces. Does that make sense?
Yes, yep, exactly what I was looking for. Another question, go ahead Chad.
Well, I actually think the reality is that in our discussions, it's going to be really nice to have that partition. But the likelihood of it being used most commonly is such that it's more or less going to be an open space. Meaning, the partition will be used the majority of the time.
Can I ask, are you orienting like the bathrooms and the kitchen based on where plumbing currently is? Or was that, how was that decided?
It's a great question. So, a lot of that right now is based on the existing entrance and knowing the proximity of the parking. If we do any underground plumbing that's necessary for that kitchen, it's going to make sense to keep it away from the public street in the sense that that's going to be less disruption for the phasing. However, the existing layout interior spaces of that space is quite dated. And because of the degree with which we're going to do a remodel, it's essentially going to be a gutted, shelled out space. So, we'll have plenty of opportunity to run and examine existing versus new for plumbing, to make sure that we're capturing the best efficiencies.
Okay, another question that came in was, you know, we're, one of the purposes of this community center is so we can have our senior dinners here. And there are certain requirements that we have to meet with MAG to be able to accomplish that. We received in writing today those requirements, so we'll make sure that those are incorporated into this and that we, we meet all of those items, so.
Yep, that's what I was thinking, that'd be obviously a focus.
Does anybody have any other questions on the building itself, or should we switch gears to parking?
So, to clarify, the bathrooms aren't there because existing plumbing drain or sewer lines exist. It's just where they've been proposed, is that correct?
That's correct. The only plumbing that I'm aware of right now is an existing small kitchen just in the community space itself. But just with the orientation of that existing square footage, where functionality, it makes sense to put that plumbing in kitchen areas as far on the south or north wall as possible. I think having that north exposure currently as an entrance necessitated it to be to the south.
Yeah, so Jessica, I think the thought of having the warming kitchen right there is it's, you know, to have the deliveries. And it's just much more accessible than having the warming kitchen more interior. And then, we wanted a big space for the luncheons, and so there really is limited space. There's little bit of wiggle room to kind of move some things around, but not a ton.
Well, I, just what I'm seeing is we're giving up because we have such limited space, we're giving up. Are you, is that a four-foot hallway in between the kitchen and the bathrooms?
I believe so, yes.
So, you're giving up that four feet as a hallway. If the bathrooms are oriented in a different direction, you could recapture that four feet. That could be, you know, a serving area where you have your tables. The food comes right out of the kitchen, it goes to the tables for the serving area. If the bathrooms potentially could be oriented maybe along that east wall. That was just what I was considering, is how to take advantage of that hallway.
Sure, we could definitely look at that. There was an opportunity in my, at one time where I was intentionally trying to create a common corridor between warming kitchen, janitor's areas, storage areas, so that when a door opens, occupants, if they're in a, you know, nice training area or something like that, there's an event happening, they're not exposed to an interior of a bathroom with doors opening and closing.
I can see an advantage in that, too.
Yeah, but there's a way to put, just coming in on the sides and to create alcoves. So, there are also other ways to create, you know, privacy or barriers without utilizing four feet by, I don't know, the width of, you know, the length of that, but it's every square foot in this space because of the constraints is, is important. And so, maybe not using it for a hallway and trying to bring it into usable space, if possible. That's just what I'm seeing.
This is getting in very much into the nitty gritty, but if we switch the storage and the janitor with the bathroom somehow, because we have to take big tables down a narrow hall through a doorway, seems kind of extra hard for, anyways. But we can, that's the nitty gritty, I don't think that's the purpose of today, right? But I, I was thinking the same thing, we have to drag tables and chairs through two doors, yeah, anyways.
Okay, should we talk about parking?
Yes.
Okay, so with this community center side, there are 144 seats. I believe there's, yeah, 18 tables with eight, eight seats to a table. So, in our parking ordinance, if I can, in our parking ordinance, we have two potential categories where this could fall. One is auditoriums, theaters, assembly halls, amphitheaters, and art centers. And that requirement is one space for every three seats, so that would be 48, just for that area. The other category is hospitals and civic buildings. The requirement there is determined by specific review, the way it's written in our code. So, I think we need to, you know, have a discussion on this. We've got, I don't know, 10 or 11 parking stalls in the existing fire station parking lot, kind of south of the warming kitchen. If we expand that curb, it does go into the area of the sculpture garden. There's not enough distance right now to put 90-degree parking in there. We'd have to expand to the south a little bit, so we could add a few stalls there. You know, brings the question, you know, is it possible to enter some kind of an agreement with the church to use that parking? Do we tear the house down on the corner and try to gain parking stalls there? Or, you know, what would, would we want to do? To try to provide adequate parking for this facility? So, any thoughts would be appreciated.
It seems like trying to get an agreement with the church is a little tenuous, it might change over time. And if we're using this primarily as a senior center, having them cross that street, is there any historical relevance to that building on the corner? Why we'd want to keep that up?
Looks like an old adobe brick house to me, but I don't know as far as historical relevance. That's, everybody will have their own opinion on that one, so.
It seems like a logical place for more parking.
I think, just to address the house, I asked somebody who is in the preservation up in Cache Valley, and they said that one of the criteria that they use to select things for preservation is how, how close is this original? If there's been additions, remodels, all kinds of things, then it's not as historically valuable. Not that everything doesn't have its own value and of its own, but that's how they would rank something, is how close it is to its original. So, the most significant part of this building really is like, it's been added on to. There's not really a lot, other than the front, the back and sides are, anyway. So, relative to historical value, it's lower down the scale, I'm going to say. Not that it's not valuable, but, so, I, I don't feel like it's the top of the list of things that we'd want to emulate or like enhance for our city, so I'm, I'm okay with removing it.
And I'm pretty confident the residents would rather keep the park area on the southeast side of the property rather than preserving some kind of use of that corner, I don't think there's really much of a use up there.
And I think, if you can scroll back up a little, I like this side vestibule, how do you say it? Vestibule, okay? And because when you, when you bring someone who's, has limited mobility to a building, you want to pull right up to that side and be able to get them directly in. You know how if you go to an, I want to call an old folks home, but a senior living, they always have like a covered place and it's right by the front door? So, I do think that all of our parking, even if we leave it now, is, is we can't really quite get them as close to the door as they like to be. So, I wouldn't, that, tearing down that building would open up some traffic flow and so that we could do some drop off right by the door.
Well, and a couple of points I want to make is, is, the historical relevancy of the building is that it's the last remaining building from the original town square. And if there's a way to capture the history in, you know, a plaque similar to what we have in our park area, or just something that is a remembrance of, of the value of the history of this town square and some of the, some of the stories behind it, that's, you know, the, the historical relevancy that this house plays on this corner.
So, Jessica, is Relic Hall not part of the original town square, was it moved?
It was moved.
Okay.
If we didn't use corners for parking and toward that building now, would you anticipate having another ingress egress point on that street to the north?
I, I think we probably would, yeah.
That would be nice to have.
Yeah, make a loop. Is it too close to, to 30 feet off the corner, though? Or could they, could they exit or enter, make an L and like go off 100 North? Rather than back onto Main Street, because we can see from Mountainville, it's not good to be entering and exiting off of Main Street.
The one challenge in this maybe could be addressed with re, if, if the house was torn down and we expand that parking lot. The proximity of the existing driveway to Main Street with the Relic Hall having basically a zero setback, it's, it's a challenge, you know, to see as you're pulling out there. Potentially, that driveway could be closed and pushed further north, maybe halfway between there and the corner or something like that. And I think that would help a lot, or we could force everything on to First North. But we could, we could look at that and analyze what would be, be the best. But that could provide some circulation where someone could come in, even if it's off First North, come through the parking lot, drop somebody off right in front of the vestibule and then go park, you know, for someone that, that doesn't move around well.
If we did that, could we capture more green space to the south of where the warming kitchen is? Like, could that become landscaping?
Potentially, it, it depends on where we land on number of parking stalls. And, and I, I don't know, we haven't talked to the church, but I would think for a city to enter some kind of an agreement with the church for parking versus a private business, I think it would be a different situation.
I can start conversations with the church on that one. Yeah, I've got a couple of connections up there, I'll reach out and see.
As far as like preserving the history of that building, I, I've seen some really cool things. And maybe this could be like on part of a wall in the community center where they take like some of the old bricks and just have some pictures or different things with some of the bricks or materials that kind of give the look and feel of what that building looked like and just, I think, didn't Lehigh on the Public Safety Building do something like that, Chad?
That was me or Chad Jones, Shane?
Can you come up to the microphone?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Chad Jones, so, in Lehigh, we, the elevation of the police building in the place of the broadband historic building that was torn down mimicked, used all the historic details. And then, all the original bricks were used on the inside of the building as well.
I think that could be kind of cool.
I think, if you want to expand out too, Ryan, if we did a parking lot in that area and like, like Jessica mentioned, we, I would be interested in the architect, are we trying, it's, I couldn't quite read all the small print, but are we trying to say that the driveway is going to not have any, the driveway to put the vehicles in the, the open bays has no access from the west side? We're trying to limit that, so it's secure and safe at all times. No one's going to park there, block their way, all that stuff, right? So, we could put grass there or tear out that little thing, because the sculpture garden is going to really be, you know, like a, a, a more aesthetic feature of this square. And, so that was kind of why I was asking about the kitchen too, because if, if they, if it's somehow tied into this space, then there'd be access to the sculpture garden from a parking lot, from the, from the building. And then, they could access the relic hall from that parking area. And then, sometimes like when we have our open house, we have a lot of people coming to the city and that could be on the same block as well. So, even though we're trying to make parking for just the west side of this new building, it would actually be utilized for more than that. And I know there's a lady in our city who wanted to do like, think about doing things in this open space more than just recreational like soccer practice, like yoga or farmer's market or something like that. And so, having additional parking, I think, would just, we'd end up utilizing this space more. So, that was, that was my thinking. And then, like I said, adding green so that somehow the building is linked into the sculpture garden, so you can walk back and forth and feel like you're not crossing a parking lot to go from one to the other. You're, it's more a part of the design.
I think those general parameters are great, because that'll give us something to go back and, and work as we like, take this to the next step, I guess.
So, Shane, I would say tearing down that home, just going very conceptual from how much square footage a stall needs, tearing that down would probably only get us, at the most, probably another 30 stalls?
That's what I was guessing.
Plus the 10 that are there, so that we're still, if we go by the one per three seats, we're still, we're 40, we're still short.
What about this parking over by the, the fire station on the east side? How many slots are we, you designating for the staff there? And then, do we have some that would be able to use for the community right there?
Ideally, we'd like to maintain around eight.
Okay.
Would be ideal for, for the fire station, as designated spots.
If you look at the Utah County area, there's eight vehicles in the parking lot.
Okay.
The way that.
So, there might be an additional 10, just here, you know, for community. And you're saying you think you could fit how many right here on the left, on the west?
Very rough number in the footprint of that lot for that home, 30.
So, 30 plus 10 is 40, we're getting closer.
Plus the extra there, so yeah, we're, we'd hit it.
And then, if you kind of look at it, I mean, according to that, if you look at this council room, how many seats we have and the parking spaces that we have available, you know? And to know that, I mean, realistically, right now, we're holding what, three? It would be hosting like three luncheons a year at this point, if we go more. But even so, it'd be like once a month, right? I don't see it going much more than that, you know, at like the most case scenario. But for three times a year, I think it's okay to kind of flood the streets with parking with that.
I agree.
And even, like I said, I will start communications with the church regarding their parking space and see if that's available also. But I think with combined all of that, I think we'll have enough spaces.
Yeah, we're not allowed to count street parking, but we all know that that's where the overflow parking ends up.
But if this is a civic facility, then the parking's flexible.
So, what's the civic requirement again, can you go over those numbers?
Yeah, it, there's not a specific requirement, it just says based on review.
So, why are we saying 40? Where did 40 come from, I got confused then.
That's for assembly halls, there's another category in our parking ordinance.
Auditorium, you said, I wrote down auditorium.
Okay.
So, it, with, we could see that 48 is sort of like the maximum we need, max. And since like, we're, we're not, it's not, that's not its primary function is in that way? It's more like Carla was saying, we need something less, but.
And also, the numbers have been going down on the luncheons. When it started, it was like, I think, 180, and I think the last one's only 120. So, I don't know if we even have to account for the parking for that, I mean, you know, I think there's a little bit of wiggle room with that as far as, I see, I think what we do is maybe look at it and see how much more parking we can get and then go from. you know, I think there's a little bit of wiggle room with that as far as, I see, I think what we do is maybe look at it and see how much more parking we can get and then go from there.
Well, also the seating, to Jessica's point, like there's no place to set up food tables, so we're going to eliminate three, three times eight is twenty-four. So we're already down twenty-four, which is another eight spots, so we're right there. If we get forty spots in this lot, I think that's very adequate, very adequate.
Well, and can you clarify, is this going to come in then as, as civic building? Because to the architect's point, that drives the requirements for bathrooms and, and those items. And bathrooms are probably one of the most expensive pieces of this remodel. And so if we're bringing in it as a civic building, can we reevaluate what the building requirements are?
So yeah, let me try to clarify that. So the civic building determination is for Alpine City's zoning ordinance. The code requirement for the restrooms comes from the International Building Code, the plumbing code, and it depends on the occupancy type of the building, occupancy used and the type of the building. So it, calling it civic doesn't make a difference, it's still going to be driven by the building code.
So Shane counted big tables times eight, but if we're holding it like more like an auditorium where we have rows like here in this building, is that where they come up, well, here's our fire, is that how they come up with occupancy per, like, what's the max occupancy of a room? Like, how, is that what's connecting that?
Manager.
Yes. Go ahead, Chad.
So the way the code will interpret the occupancy is, of interpretation to me, stat. We call it a heat rest and show the amount of tables it's completely filled. They're going to want to base it off of the amount of occupancy we can hold. If you fill with no seats, it's going to go up on assembly use, which means adjustable seating, its use. It will be based on the amount of occupancy for, so that, that stage would necessitate the amount of occupancy. We need to have a requirement for the occupancy and the correspondence from the pictures.
Can everybody that's online put their, um, put mute on their computers and then only, Chad, if you could be the only one speaking, there seems to be some kind of feedback. We're having a very difficult time understanding, unless Chad that's present, did you understand what he was saying and can maybe translate for us?
It's. So yeah, you determine the building type, and then there's code requirements that go with that. Then you determine the occupancy type, and then there's calculations that go with that. It's going to come down to, so the mechanical plumbing engineer is the one who is going to do those calculations. I don't see, just because of the size of the space and it being assembly, I don't see it probably being under three required. They do require more for assembly space.
Apologizing. I think the noise was coming from me. I'm unfortunately at a conference this week and I couldn't get away from it. Um, I'm trying my best to communicate, but I apologize for the additional noise.
Okay, any other questions regarding the concept plan?
Now Shane, I guess we have, we have all those bricks from the Carlisle House too. I like the idea of doing some kind of historic tie-in, so.
Yeah.
I'd keep that in mind.
And we're looking for um, ways to tie in the sculpture garden like with pavers and things, so I, I don't know how we could use the bricks, but I, I feel like part of the, the sculpture committee really wanted the garden to be like tying the past, present, and the future. So um, we could let our, our landscape architect know, we've got extra brick, you know, or whatever, and she can create like a something or other. But anyways, someone more creative than me could figure that out. But I feel like um, acknowledging that this is a historic place is a huge part of why they wanted the sculpture garden in this square. And that would fit very well with using bricks and, you know, and talking about the buildings and whatever. It's supposed to be a, a, a mark that this was our town, this is our, the historic town center and what happened here. So I think all of these ideas are going to blend together.
I think we got really good feedback on the parking and something that we can work with. Um, is there any other discussion on parking? How about the?
Oh, I do, I do. What has come up with um, some of the feedback from Mountainville when they've been doing their drawings is they would like the parking not to be right on the edge of the, so that the street, like there's some kind of buffer, so that we're not looking from Main Street into a parking lot, but there's like a, like, you know, um, even the church has a berm with trees. So anyways, that's the only other thing.
So, so the city actually has an ordinance?
Oh, there you go.
Uh, it's actually in the commercial side and this isn't commercial, it was. Um, and I'd have to look to see if it is written that it applies. Uh, but we don't allow parking in the thirty-foot setback from the streets. There is a provision to get an exception and exceptions have been granted before. And we would probably need an exception to, I think there should be a landscape buffer.
Okay.
But maybe it's not thirty feet.
Right, okay.
Um, so yeah, you know, have some nice trees and stuff in it to, to make it look nice. But um, let's see, the other, what's the other item? Sorry, I was ready to go to the next one and now I lost my train of thought.
The aesthetics of the building?
That, that is one, it, that's not the one I was thinking of, but we can go there and then I'll think of the other item I wanted to bring up. You know, it's, it's early, but I think some discussion while we're here and some feedback uh, would be great to get from the council. On, you know, do you just want to turn Chad loose and let him come up with something to consider and approve at a later date? Knowing that, you know, we, we'd want it to tie into this building in some way, form or fashion. Oh, I know what it was. But we can finish this.
Write it down. Yeah, Shane, I think, I think um, judging by the, the length of the discussion on parking, we'll make maybe the other discussions briefer.
Yeah.
Less lengthy.
Briefer.
And so, I agree with what you said, and I think all the city council members and whoever else should, should give you feedback probably offline, but.
Yeah.
You know, some, some kind of tie-in to historic, and I think there's been a lot of new firehouses built around here lately. And, you know, there's some things we could probably take from some of those things too.
Okay, so, and I think the direction is, if you have any feedback about the outside aesthetics of it, please give feedback to, do you want the feedback or who do you?
Sure, then I can, we're, we're meeting regularly and then we can, I can bring it up.
That would be perfect. If you guys can um, send emails to Shane with your feedback.
I think, what about the last part about the gateway historic guidelines, because those are, we're almost, do we have a final draft, Ryan?
The one that we've been, we've been sending out, the, well, we got, we have a, a draft version of it, so yeah, that's.
Close to final.
Yep.
Because I, I do think they, they talk about some, some principles that would apply, so.
We'll, we'll get that in the right hands.
I think in the right hands, they'll, they'll be able to interpret it very well.
Yeah, okay. The other item that I wanted to bring up was the driveway. Um, the concept that we've had, you know, over the last little while, had access from the south. Uh, we received some feedback um, from some of the council, maybe accessing from the east would be better. Um, so they put this together, I think chiefs are okay with this plan. I did get an email and maybe some of you were copied on it, it was from Andy Spencer, and his name will come up later um, on a committee for this. But he, he prefers to see the access from the south. Um, and we can send that email out and, and you can uh, you know, consider his thoughts on that. But at this stage, I, I mean, it could go either way and still work in my mind. Um, but I think this is a, a good layout that will work for the apparatus uh, the department has and um, or it could go the other direction, so. Okay, um, I think we covered everything that we need to. Chad Littlewood, do you have any questions or? Anything that we'd want to input from the council?
Uh, none of this time. I appreciate one's feedback and uh, this has been great, so we'll take this into consideration and then work as we work through our meetings. Continue to develop this as we shift into schematic design. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming on during your conference.
Yeah, I get, apologize for the noise, but thank you very much.
So with that in mind, um, I'll entertain a motion for item B on our um, action items.
So we're approving the concept plan?
Is this an informal, was this, I'm sorry?
Well, what, what we, what we put is that we would bring a concept to the council to approve, to make sure we're all on the same page and that we feel comfortable as staff and our team going in a direction and taking this to the next step. So I, I think a motion would be appropriate for it.
Okay, there's sample motions in front of you. If one of you guys want to move forward with the motion?
I move to approve the concept plan for Alpine Fire Station Number Two O Two project as proposed, subject to the following conditions, that we look at the um, the parking and potentially putting a parking lot, replacing the home to the west.
Yes.
And um, knowing that there will still be changes and, and council and others will give feedback to Shane on aesthetics and other things.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Law, seconded by Councilman Rumler. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Chrissy Animan, yes.
Ron Rumler, yes. Kelly Law, yes.
Jessica?
Jessica Swan, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and Mayor, I'd just like to say I'm like really pleased with the team we have put together for this project. Both Chad's been awesome, Preston's online too. It's, uh, I think we've had real productive meetings and, and great input, and their experience is invaluable for us that aren't experienced in this area, so.
Great, good to know that we have a great team. Okay, let's move on with um, item A, which is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, consideration for approval of the Fitzgerald Annexation. Thank you Chief Beck for coming, we appreciate your attendance.
Yep, this one's me. So we've, we've looked at this one a couple of times, but just to refresh a little bit, we've got, we've got locations and everything so I can pull up too. But this is a, a request to annex into the city, it's nineteen point eight six acres. The entire subdivision itself is a little over twenty, um, but there is that little sliver that's already in the city. So um, what they would like to do is, is designate this as in the CR forty thousand zone, which meets the surrounding zoning designation with a PRD overlay. So um, they can technically have in the CR forty thousand, the smallest lots they could have is twenty thousand square foot lots with uh, twenty-five percent open space for the entire development. Um, the concept plan they've submitted shows twelve lots with the smallest one being about thirty-seven thousand square feet, and then that five point four seven acres of open space um, along the east side of the development there. Um, we've, as we've gone over this, there's, there's some rerouting of some trails that we'll have to look at. Uh, the west canal, or the west trails, uh, canal at Central is flank and the east is corkscrew. Um, that's been looked at and reviewed by the Trails Committee and their recommendation is, is attached in the, in the document as well. Another thing we would have to look at with this is road connection, there's a development to the north because it's in the wildland urban interface zone. They would have to have two points of, of an entrance and an exit in order to make that work. We've, we've got a development agree, or we've got an agreement between those two property owners, uh, again, for the road, uh, to go through both of those to make that work. This was originally approved by the city council on December twenty-eighth of twenty-four. Uh, you accepted the petition for further study um, as part of that. A pre-annexation agreement was also looked at and, and approved at that point by the city council. And again, by, by adopting that, we're not, we're not guaranteeing an annexation agreement or anything like that, it's just, it's just part of the, the request for this. Let's see, we, we looked at this a couple of times, it's gone through Planning Commission uh, back in March. You guys held a public hearing on it on the twenty-fifth of March um, to, to satisfy those requirements. The last time we looked at this was June tenth, it was reviewed by the council, uh, again, it was tabled. Uh, we were in the process of receiving updated fee recommendations from HROX, uh, engineering for related projects, costs that would impact potential annexation fee. And uh, that is also included in a memo uh, for the update on those as well. We had to uh, reach out to different, different attorney groups, uh, our city attorneys uh, firm was unable to, uh, there was a conflict of interest there, so we had to, took us a minute to find a, an attorney that we could, that would work with this. We've, we found one that represents, uh, he says, uh, similar to what Steve does, represents multiple cities and towns. Uh, he was able to look at it, uh, all the information provided and uh, gave us the green light on those. Said we, we met all the, all the requirements as far as uh, his review of the, the information given. And again, the Trails Committee was able to make a recommendation uh, as part of this as well. The review standards are, are also listed in your, in your packet for annexation uh, with, with uh, some feedback and, and answers to some of these questions on, uh, from staff as far as how we've met those and, and just kind of the thought process on some of these. Uh, I, I, we won't bother, we won't go through all those, but they were, they were included in your packet for review. As, again, this is a legislative decision, as far as staff recommendations, we, we've got a couple on there. Payment of any annexation fee set by the council, uh, obviously would need to be done. And these, we're, we're recommending these be completed at time of annexation, uh, where possible. The road agreement with the northern property owner has been, is included in your packet, it's been signed by both uh, parties, so we're good to go on that one. Uh, dedication of required water shell, water shares, and then the uh, recording of those trail easements uh, with the county is part of that. Actually, what I have is a, a really quick version of this, uh, your packet has a lot of the information already included. But if there's any questions or anything, I'd be happy to go over those or defer to Shane on.
Yeah, so, when, so when, when do we do the, negotiate the annexation fee? Is it after this?
It would be, it would be as part of this uh, review process.
Okay.
So Shane's in his, in his memo that was included in there, uh, it was about twenty-six thousand, I don't the exact numbers, that's the location if anyone.
So it's already, so if we pass this, that, that fee's already included?
Yeah, yeah, that would be, yeah, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, that would be part of it, right there. So it'd be around twenty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-five per lot.
Since you're on that page, I did have a question about the calculation. That last sentence in the paragraph on the second page, the first paragraph on the second page, right underneath the table. So we're um, divi, we're dividing up the cost of the new growth, is that correct? Or are we, because it says existing deficiency, but then I did the math and it's, I think it's the new growth. So can you just clarify?
Let me just read it.
That last sentence.
Are you looking at this one, Chrissy, is that?
Yeah. Oh, I was looking at this paragraph.
Sorry, yeah, where it's, it says, the recommendation for the annex fee.
Yeah.
Annexation move based on the existing deficiency, but I think the math calculates from the new growth. But maybe that's where I, why I'm asking.
Let me go look at that real quick.
Okay. While we're, while you're doing the math, I was um, wondering the, I was sort of doing my little checklist, what needs to happen to um, to pass this? And the staff recommendation had four bullet points, and one of them was that um, there needs to be the dedication of required water shares. So that's like a, a process I'm unfamiliar with. Are those just like for sale on the open market? Or like, is that going to be any issue, or is it a given that they'll be able to acquire them and that's not a, a hurdle?
Yeah, so there's, there's part of this in the, in the document that showed how many shares they needed, it was twenty-four and some change. Um, they, my understanding in talking with the applicant is that they already have those uh, lined up to be, to be purchased from the property owner to the north.
Right, so it's conditional on approving this and they just, they've sort of?
They'd have to submit those.
Okay.
Transfer those into their.
But they're available and we're good? It's not like that we're, we don't have them?
Right.
Thank you.
Shane, what was the, what, how did the suggestion to fund fifty percent of the existing deficiency? Shane, what was the, what, how did the suggestion to fund fifty percent of the existing deficiency come about?
That's when we had this memo, when was it, June? In June?
Yeah.
That's just something as we kind of analyze things, we just came up with that. Half of the, half of the existing deficiencies spread amongst the future annexation lots. It's just a number that I guess staff felt good about.
I think a lot of it.
You don't feel good about a hundred?
Well, because there's already existing deficiencies in the system. You have to be able to justify what you're charging also. So that would be a harder way to justify it.
But there wasn't like an exact calculation. It's just.
No, there was.
No, I'm just meaning the fifty percent, coming up with this fifty percent.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It was the thought of collecting impact fees to take care of whatever percentage. Let's see, let's just say it's a.
So the way I read this is the impact fees are to cover the new growth portion. And the existing deficiencies, you're saying have them fund fifty percent of the existing deficiency?
Yes, to help move that portion forward,
Yeah.
through the annexation fee.
So one question, right? And I'm not sure, just because I don't know where this would come in. Is there any way that we can also write in that as far as, because I know some of these lots are bigger. And I know we've limited other parts of the city with what they can landscape, that they only landscape up to so many square feet, whether it's half an acre, a third of an acre, whatever it may be, and that they have to submit a landscape plan. What I don't want to see is some of the larger lots, you know, grass like three acres and just because that takes up so much more water. Can we make that as part of the annexation or does that come in during the development phase, when they, development agreements? Or how does that work? When can, when can we implement that?
I know we did that with, I think it was up in Three Falls.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how they did that with, with, with Three Falls, but it could be something either as part of the condition of approval of the annexation or is it, is through development? But we can look and see, I don't know if Shane, Shane's doing ten things right now, so I won't.
So if council does make a motion to approve the annexation, I would prefer that we put in some kind of language with that so that we can prevent soccer fields.
Doesn't it go in though with the development rather than the annexation?
Yes, but I mean normally, but because this is an annexation, we can also make it part of the annexation, condition of approval.
I will say then in my experience, it gets very hard to police.
I know, but I mean if they have, if we make it a condition of whatever the square footage or acreage that council wants to do and require an annexation, or not an, I'm sorry, a landscape plan along with their, with their plans, I would think that would be easier. I get it in the long run, but at least there's something solid that, you know, that they didn't follow their plans. Because I know, I don't believe that we're currently requiring landscape plans, but for this and moving forward in large developments, I would prefer that we do require, so that we have something on the record.
But can we carve out just one section or do we need just the ordinance for all new builds? Why would we just carve this area out?
Well, because it's an annexation, it's totally different. We could actually have a little bit more latitude in it. Going forward, yes, we can do exactly what you said.
And we, we do have language right now. If you remember a couple of years ago, Jed was still here, so I don't, however long Jed's been gone, but Central Utah Water required cities, if, if we wanted residents to be able to be eligible for like flip your strip and different reimbursement programs, we had to adopt a landscaping requirement. It didn't say we had to require it as part of subdivision plans, but we do have, we do have that language on the books. It's like Shane said, it's, it becomes difficult to enforce at times just because it's, but we do have, we do have language in there that, that would kind of guide that, but.
Right, so what I see.
No, I, I mean, I'm totally agreeing. We, we could totally add this language in there as well, but.
Have we got to my original question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're, you're absolutely correct. It's actually fifty-two eight sixty. Thanks for catching that.
Yeah. Well, no, wait, fifty, no, I got the exact same number you did by using new growth.
New growth, not the existing deficiency.
That, so I think that's the verbiage that's
Oh, right.
inconsistent.
Well, the idea was we're, we're already collecting the impact fee for new growth. And so we're trying to get help on the existing deficiency side.
Oh, yeah, so that's, then I think this amount is incorrect then.
Right, and that's, I just gave you the new.
Okay, I was like, I was using the calculation to confirm the language and you're saying the language is correct, but the number is incorrect.
So the number is what?
Fifty-two eight sixty. So if you add those two numbers.
Yeah, it's like twice as much. That, that, that is a big difference.
And divide it by seventy-three, it's the fifty-two eight sixty.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So this calculation addresses existing deficiency and new growth. Is there, I was looking in the information given, is there any information that was requested before? How this annexation and serving water would impact the total build out for the city of Alpine and what that plan looks like?
So, so this area was included, you know, we anticipated serving it. And we have other areas in the city that can't really be developed under current ordinances without the road through this property. So it anticipated these handful of lots here. On the other, on Pine Grove, it did not anticipate that. It's more lots specifically said it would need to be looked at individually for that area, Pine Grove. And I still call it the Melby property, but yeah.
And on the water report, it looks like the well was chosen as the deficiency to address, but there were other recommendations to improve delivery throughout the city. And I just wonder why those weren't also selected as offsetting costs like upsizing the CUP line? That would, I think, if my understanding is right, upsizing that line would actually improve the delivery system for, for more residents than drilling a well, but I might not understand it accurately.
So I was actually in a meeting with John from HROX just a couple, it may have been yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I was going to say two days ago. So the projects with the biggest bang for the buck, I specifically asked him. It's the booster pumps that are planned for four hundred west and the well. The other is absolutely going to help. It'll help us CUP water and the HEATY well at the same time. But it's a lot of large diameter line for a long distance through the city. So we anticipate that taking longer to get installed. So if we're looking for the biggest bang for the puck right now, those are the projects that he, he said would do it. We have one of those included here and then we have one from the culinary side of things.
And Jessica, so I mean, I'm sure you remember that when Canyon Crest is being torn apart for the multipurpose trail, that we are upsizing the pipes to better facilitate. But as Shane mentioned, it's going to be phased. All of those projects are very, very expensive. But that will eventually happen also. And once we do all of that, then all the zones will be, have redundancies, which will allow for better coverage for the entire city.
And we actually had the pre-bid meeting for that project yesterday. That's when I talked to John, so.
Sorry to keep going back to the calculation, but I'm going to ask one more question. So we're anticipating seventy-three more lots in total if we do all annexations, which was part of this calculation. And then this cost is in today's dollars. And so even if these other two areas get developed five years, ten years down the road, because we're in, we're installing this in today's dollars, assuming that we are moving forward with these projects, that their fee would be approximately the same. Is that correct per lot?
I would say approximately the same, yes.
Any other questions?
I guess I feel a little differently than Kelly about the fifty percent because we have an existing deficiency and we have, you know, like two thousand homes. Is that right?
A little bit over.
We, like twenty-eight, fifty, twenty-nine.
And this is only adding seventy-three homes. So it seems a little bit disproportionate that seventy-three lots are carrying fifty percent of the burden of existing deficiency for twenty-eight homes, twenty-eight hundred homes.
But as Jessica stated, that's on one of several projects.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, this is geographic too, right? It's that area.
So, yeah, if there's.
I know there's zones, so you're saying that, yeah, just because I'm a numbers person. So you're saying that this particular zone, that this, all of these, these new places are going to be there up on the east side, are benefiting from this well. Not all twenty-eight hundred homes are going to benefit from this well.
And theoretically they could because of the gravity.
Can you speak louder?
Because theoretically because the new well will be in the high zone and so, you know, our system is gravity fed. But I think mostly it will service, it will be a redundancy and it'll service the high zone. And if there's leftover, then it could theoretically go into the middle and then down. But, but mostly it'll be, primary will be the high.
Yeah, it depends on how water's moving, if you've been on the water tour.
Not yet.
It depends on what time of year, the snowpack, there's a lot of variables on.
Okay.
You should go on the water tour and I would, I would encourage you to think more about how to fund this versus, versus like how are we.
I have been thinking about how to fund it, Kelly. I have been spending a lot of time thinking about that.
One thing is like, if I, I don't, I don't know that I would apply the same rules if it's, if it's forward into the future. There's a lot that happens with inflation and other things. The other thing is I don't know that I would apply it evenly across all these annexations. We don't know exactly what's, what's going to happen when one or the other one comes in. This one is a fairly easy one that we're easing into. And so I like what Shane's done. I do, in my mind, I'm thinking this is what we're going to do for this one. And as each one of them come up, we'll look at them.
I was more along the lines of what do we need for new growth? Because the new growth is going to come from these specific areas. So now you've switched it on me in the thinking like, we're helping, we're having our new areas pay for existing deficiencies. To me, we, existing deficiencies, the bigger burden should be placed on existing residents. Because that's my logic. So not that I'm going to argue with you about it, but that's just, I'm having a hard time swallowing the bigger number and spreading it to such a small number of lots. But that's my opinion.
Maybe an argument another way is we have an efficiency, so to add more homes, we need to take care of that deficiency as well. So anyway, it's.
And it's the one time that we do have more latitude than we would with any other development that's actually already in the city. You know, if you look at it, if they were to develop anywhere else, they would have to drill their own well, come up with their own water system, sewer, everything else. There's, it's an added benefit to come into the city. You know, there's services that we provide that would be totally different as you've heard from the people that are in Box Elder South. So it's not just this deficiency. It's, you know, this is the major thing that it will address, but it, you know, there's a cost and this is what we've calculated it to be.
Well, and this is the processes question. So both of these projects that are listed, the Grove Tank Upsides and the Heritage Hills, well, those were studies and recommendations given to us, but as a council, those were never approved, what direction we wanted to move and what was in the best interest of the city. And so I'm a little confused on the process that these are inserted into this document that will be, you know, we're being asked to vote on when they haven't been approved through city council that they're projects that the city should move forward with.
Actually, I think we have to back up on that because the, the study was adopted by the council. So all those projects were listed for both the culinary and the PI system in those master plans that were adopted. That's why we're able to collect the impact fee that's described in those documents right now. So they were, they were adopted by the council. But bringing individual projects from those, those plans into a budget year, I think that's maybe more what you're referring to right now. But we're collecting this money so that when that project comes into our, our projects in our budget year, it can help to fund it.
So they still have yet to be approved for budgeting purposes?
For, for construction, they haven't been approved, but they, that plan was approved. We had a public hearing and everything at the city council prior to approval. So that's where I've described in the past that our, our master plans, our, our rates, we have done rate studies and set those rates and our impact fees, they all tie together.
In case you're not understanding how the rate study works, there's a class that's being held on October first at the Utah League of City of Towns to help us all understand rate studies. So I invite you all to it.
Jessica, did you have any other questions?
No.
On the positive side, I feel like there went through a lot of work for the trails. Where's my little bullet points? There is trails, they have water ready to go, they have the road. So there's two access points. So they've done a lot of work and so I was happy to see all of that's coming together.
So anyone putting forth a motion, if you guys can take note of the new value or the new amount for the annexation fee per lot?
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Could we just, before you motion, Brent, can we just emphasize too that these, and Shane, correct me if I'm wrong on this too, as part of these, they're completed at time of annexation, so we can get like the water and agreement and all that stuff upfront, in the, in the recording of trails upfront, not as we get in the development process.
So at the time of annexation?
Yeah, the dedication of the road, the trail easements.
Could, I think it would be helpful.
Okay, I move to approve ordinance oh, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, the petition to annex parcels eleven zero eight five zero zero one five eleven zero five two zero zero four zero and eleven zero four nine zero 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 eight with the following conditions, that by the time of annexation, the payment of the annexation fee set by council tonight at fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars per lot. We already have the execution of the road agreement, right? Dedication of the required water shares and the recordation of trail easements with the county. And Mayor, will you help me with your language? Was it to require a landscape plan?
Yes, and to limit landscaping to, what do we, what did we do in Three Falls? Was it half an acre?
It, it's an acre up there. It's a full acre.
So open space or?
What I would like to see is maybe half an acre of landscape and then see rest kind of natural. Like I said, what I don't want to see is a huge soccer field up there. Just, I just know that grass takes the most water. And so, I mean, it's up to you guys what you think. Chrissy, what?
I don't think it's the wrong time to be doing it. I think when they give us their development plan, isn't there another step in all this?
Yeah, so those, those stuff to go through the subdivision review process.
Yeah, I think we just need more discussion on what, how much to limit and, and I feel like, again, I'm trying to apply fairly to, to all new development and not just a specific area.
Right, but annexation is a different beast. It's totally different. Any new development, we don't have this latitude. As long as they fit, if they're in the city and a new development. As long as they fit, if they're in the city and a new development comes in, we won't even see it if they're following everything in our ordinance. This is the one time that you can add the layers.
I understand.
Just, just a reminder to the state, uh, I won't say in their infinite wisdom, because I always say that. But the state changed the subdivision review process a couple of years ago, that all cities have to fall on out. So, based off that, the subdivision review process won't come back to city council.
This is your one time, like, it will not come back, once we annex it.
I think we need to change ordinance, and I think it deserves more study than a five-minute conversation.
It's not an ordinance that we can change, it's state law.
With the subdivision review process, yeah.
No, we could say that all new, all new subdivisions need to have restricted landscaping for some.
And yeah, no, I think we will, we just don't have any others coming in right now.
It's a good time to be prepared.
So it's not going to be happening, so, it's not going to be happening during the subdivision process unless we state it now.
We're still mid, uh, motion here. But this is a, isn't this a PRD, so we do have to say in the landscaping? It's just if it's a non-PRD that it's automatic approval if they meet the conditions?
Oh.
Oh, you're right.
I don't think landscaping's part of the PRD ordinance, but.
Not off the top of my head do I remember seeing a landscaping requirement. We do have, and, and again, uh, part of that water-wise landscaping ordinance that we had to adopt as far as, uh, with Central Utah Water in order to be eligible for those, like Flip Your Strip and all that stuff. We do have that into place, going off memory here, but I don't believe it requires, like, at time, during a subdivision review process that would kick in. It's just more as like a general, this, these are the requirements you would have to meet to do that. But I don't think it limits, um, like, like you can only water an acre, or half an acre, whatever that is. I don't, I don't believe that's in there.
All right, well, I was, I apologize for not hearing what you were saying before, because I was working on the numbers that we were talking about with Shane. So, they have, what, twelve, thirteen lots? And some dedicated open space? You're worried about, what are you, where, where's this potential soccer field going to be?
Well, some of these lots are larger than just, you know.
So on someone's property, you don't want to, oh, just not to use it for soccer, just a, a size of it.
No, I'm talking about the size of it, right? Just seeing some of the areas, I'm just trying to look ahead and be proactive in how that is. So if you've got.
So you're looking to restrict how individual lot owners can?
We already have, that, in Three Falls, we've already done it. But you know what? I think I misunderstood, there isn't like a huge, most of them are to an acre, so maybe we don't. It's just only really one lot, and it might be fine here. I, I think I must have been looking at another version where the lots were a lot bigger, and that's what I remembered.
And with a PRD, we're allowing.
Yeah, with the dedication of the open space, it's limited, so it's kind of moot, so you can go ahead and move on if you want.
All right, I'll strike that, that last, uh, condition on my motion.
Okay, was there anything else that we were adding that we have left out?
Can I touch base too on the trails? And Shane, correct me on this too, and I apologize, I didn't bring this up earlier. The recommendation from the Trails Committee was to have the, is the middle one corkscrew, the one that goes right down the middle? Is that flank? Which one goes right down the middle? Flank. Recommendation from the Trails Committee was to leave that as a dirt trail, uh, so horses and things can go through there. And, and, and the annexation agreement, we, we required all those to be, to be paved, with some kind of asphalt. So, as part of that, if you, if you want to leave it in dirt and just adopt the Trails Committee recommendation on that, that's a possibility. A lot more maintenance. Or if you want to stick with the language of the annexation agreement, having that trail be paved, we could do that as well. But if maybe you want to address that.
How, how, which trail is it?
There's one that goes right down the middle.
So like Lot Twelve will have a dirt trail right through their frontage?
Yeah, that would be part of the, part of the process of that.
Can I, Will, can you come up and kind of address that, what, the, from the viewpoint of the Trails Committee? I'm just curious.
It's, it's not uncommon to have trails go through the front of that.
Like, that's, they don't have any other frontage though, that lot, does it?
It would, it would still be, it would, well, I'll let Will address it, but.
Need a driveway and a.
Yeah, and it would, it would just be part, it would almost be like a sidewalk. I think this would be in, in placement of a, yeah. Yeah, that's why, that's why we're saying maybe let's, let's have those be asphalted.
Okay, just quickly, this discussion came up, we, we talked about this from the beginning as being an asphalt trail. And it always had, had come forth that way. And it has a concrete edge on the, the lot side and a backing because of the curb and gutter. So it would be within that, and, so that was going to be asphalted. Okay, so you have concrete edge to stop it from migrating into the people's yards and falling apart. That's one thing with an asphalt trail, is it really has hard to, maintenance became the discussion that night. Maintaining this asphalt trail, how are we going to do it? Some of them have been using, you know, we're just park trail, and seeing how it took and how much the roots got into it and everything else, and, and how that asphalt trail came apart. So that was what led to discussion besides one other thing. Within that week of our meeting, one of our trail people who is there for horses, had fallen off her horse on an asphalt driveway. Within a day later, another one happened. And both of those were on our minds as they're looking at this, saying, hey, is asphalt really the best trail? Is that a good trail for a multi-use? Because that's what this one is. This middle one is to create the most use. I opposed it because I thought, probably what you're thinking, Kelly, I really don't want a dirt trail in front of my, the rest of my landscaping, and it will be weed-infested, what will it look like? Down the road, is that going to be more maintenance than maybe the asphalt? But I do get, so that's where it came from. That's what, and so, they, they voted, and, and it was all in favor except me for the asphalt trail to be a dirt trail. And, that, and that's, that's just the history of it.
Wouldn't, um, now that I'm re-looking at this, so, so on this Lot Twelve here, they not have a driveway that they need to get?
Yes.
And stuff to go across here? Wouldn't it be better to just make the road a little wider and make the trail, the, on the shoulder of the road and paint a white line?
Our challenge with that is if it's horses and stuff, they are actually in the road. And we're finding, if you want a perfect example of it, um, we widen the road, Grove Drive.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
It's horrid. This, all what happened is the traffic picked up, the speed's faster. Uh, I ride that quite a bit because I come out of Lambert Park. And I'm amazed at how close I am getting, close to being run over and hit. Where before, I never felt that way. But now, it's wider, and it, the traffic's faster, and it's, it, it's not even safer for me. In fact, I, I would be concerned if my kids were walking on that particular area. I'd be really concerned because it's curved, it's not easy to see, but that's just, but yeah, so, we, we did talk that suggestion, Kelly, because that was a quick one to do, and it, and it stopped, curb gutter would be all the way back here, and so you don't have to have another curb wall to hold everything in. But either way, whether it's dirt or whether it's asphalt and it goes behind the road, it does need a curb wall on the, on their side, or, or we will lose our trail there. You won't know where it is, it will soon migrate into their property and it won't be there. So, that was the thinking. I don't know if there's anything else I can add to that, but it was because of horses with shoes, and asphalt don't mix as well as you'd like, especially when we're maintaining. And what they do, they just done a, a covering on, on the area where they both fell.
Yeah, it's like a seal coat.
Seal coat. Thank you.
So, from the staff standpoint, we do not want a gravel trail there. It, it'll be horrible. We quit doing that twenty-five years ago because it didn't work.
It doesn't work.
We, we put sidewalks and different things in, um, because it was such a problem.
It's hard to make.
I'd hate to go back twenty-five years, and I, I think.
Do we know what kind of trail that MAGA is putting in? Is it asphalt, or is it?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean.
Do we need a second yet?
No, and I, and I.
I read a second.
I apologize, we had brought this up, just something to address as we were going through there, so.
I appreciate you break, because it, it came up, and it was a change from what you have in your document.
We're getting off track here.
From the recommendation from the Trail Committee, uh, was a change from what you actually have.
Yeah, so I think Ryan needs to know in the motion whether council wants an asphalted trail or whether they want a dr, a dirt trail. So that needs to be part of.
The condition, the condition was, the easement has to be provided. So you want an additional condition that we, or, just a clarification?
Yeah, so in our, in the pre-annexation agreement, it says that one will be paved. And so with the Trails Committee recommended something different, we just needed to know which one you wanted us to.
Clarification that we will stick with the annexation, pre-annexation agreement of a paved asphalt trail.
Okay, is there, okay, it's been moved by Councilman Rummler, seconded by Councilman Law. Any further discussion?
This will be my last comment. I am having a hard time buying off on the, the increase in the fee, especially with the short notice. But, um, overall, the plan is good and they've met all the requirements and, um, but I, I still feel like we need to be more cognizant, as we've had public comment multiple times about the whole water project, and because of somewhat of our shortsightedness, and I will include that in myself, that we are increasing the burden on, um, new annexations. And I'm not sure I feel that that's the right, even though we can, doesn't mean that's what we should do. But overall, it's a great project.
Any other comments?
Just joking.
Okay, if not, we'll proceed with a roll call vote.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Brent Rummler, yes. Kelly Law, yes.
Jessica Smeoune, no.
Okay, annexation passes. Okay. Let's move on to item C, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash nineteen, the Alpine Development Code. Is that, you running?
Yeah, this one's me, yeah. So we, as staff, we've looked at, and I'll, I'll show you the example here in a second because it'll like, make a lot more sense. We get residential requests for, uh, to build a home on a corner lot. Right now, we don't really have a good definition of a front yard in a corner lot. So essentially, someone could pick, uh, which lot is their front yard because the definition meets both sides, or both, both in a two-sided, uh, uh, corner lot. So I'm, I'm just going to pull up, this is an example of one that we, we dealt with. What, what you wouldn't, looking at the, at the plan of this, you would, you would think this is, this is the front door, this is the front yard, this is, this is the front area there. They actually wanted to call this their front yard, this side, there's a small door leading to, I think this is kind of a, a mudroom type area. But because they got favorable setbacks on this side, considering it a side yard instead of a, a backyard, our code just doesn't give us any language to say, no, this is your, this would be a front corner lot. We have bets among the staff of when this lot is going to come in and ask for an address change, because they're going to get sick of getting Amazon packages at this store because that's technically their front, their front, that's where their address is off of. So what this does is just gives us language, um, that says, these are the criteria for a front lot, uh, front yard. Whoops, we don't need those anymore. This is, this is our criteria for a front yard on a corner lot. So that's all it does, that's what we're asking to do. We just, we just get these every so often that, that necessitates a little more definition, a little more clarity on these. And if you look at the standards that we have on there, they could still technically pick which side is their front yard, but it just has to meet those, those standards. So that's all I have. We had, we went through this on the planning commission side, uh, looked at a bunch of different corner lots, uh, in residential and commercial. And, and this is the, what the planning commission recommended to move forward to you guys tonight for, for approval. Any questions or anything I can help answer? Again, it's legislative, uh, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to.
So is it creating a problem for, for the city when someone designates what their preference is?
Yeah, so it just, if you, well, where's my example? So it just makes it so there's, like, we had to, on this particular lot, we had to go get feedback from police, we had to get back, feedback from fire, just because if, if you look at this, the natural thought is this is the front, this is the front yard, this is the front. But really, when it's on the side, the address is on the side, uh, this side lot here, this side road here. It just creates confusion and headaches, uh, uh, as someone is trying to go there. Not to mention postal service and, uh, you know, if, if you have Amazon deliveries, any, any delivery that way. So this just kind of brings a little more common sense into, this is your front yard, this is your front door, this is where your address is designated. So they're not, we get these all, all the time on corner lots where someone comes in, they want to change, uh, the address because they, it makes more sense to have it a different way than what they, what they had.
I mean, for me, it was one, it's more of a safety issue, especially with, um, our, um, you know, Lake Lone Peak, um, district, where, you know, they put the address in and they could be going to the totally wrong place. You know, our house has two different entrances, it's confusing where, which door it's coming from. And if it's a life or death situation or emergency situation, I would want our emergency services to be able to get there efficiently. And I feel like we're just hindering it by playing this little count and mass game, that it'd be better to have clear definition so that people know what they're working with. To me, it's a matter of safety.
And with this, with the setback too, so, so if this, if, I don't know if you can see my, my mouse, Jessica, but, uh, so this is the front, this would be the front yard, by that definition, this would be the rear. So we would need thirty feet here and thirty feet here. So by doing it this way, they got a smaller setback on a, on a side yard closer to, closer to, to neighbors. And if they get to come back and change their address, then it, it kind of negates the, you know, the, the whole, whole setback functions that we have there.
So is there a process to change your address?
Yeah, so they would, they would, and Deanne can speak more to this, she's been, Jed, Jed would handle this, and, uh, Deanne took this on as, as a recorder. But, yeah, you just have to, is it an affidavit, Deanne, is that what you have to go through? Through the city, and then it goes through the county and the post office and public safety and all that other.
So if they wanted to orient their house to the, differently than what the original lot was approved, they could go through the address change process, or, and then we have our own process? Or that would, that would by definition change the orientation of the house?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't change the orientation of the house, it would just, yeah. And we get, we get address changes often, not necessarily in this, this case, but we do get them often because some, we had one, a lady liked the number eight, so she wanted to change her address to eight 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 West, whatever. So we get those every once in a while, they go through the process, but with, with stuff like this, I mean, there's clearly a front and clearly a, just based off the orientation of the home.
So, address change has no impact on orientation of the house, is what I'm hearing? Okay. Okay, I'm, if there's no one talking, I will talk. I move to approve the proposed amendment to the Alpine Development Code three point oh one top, one one oh, defining the front yard on corner lots, finding that it is consistent with the general plan, city code, and city policies.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Hanneman, seconded by Councilman Rummler. Any discussion? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Brent Rummler, yes. Kelly Law, no.
Jessica Smeoune, no.
Okay, um, resolution does not pass. So I'm just curious, Jessica, is there a reason why, and I'd like to hear from you also, Kelly, is there a reason why you did not want to?
I just think it's, you know, a property owner has a preference of where they want the front of their house to be. But that's something that we already, that we allow, to give a property owner that ability to make that decision.
Kelly?
Am I requ, am I required to answer?
No, you don't have to, I was just curious.
No, I, I wanted to vote no on something. No, um, it's, uh, I just think, I kind of align with Jessica, the property owner, although I do want some, I just think people that do that are weird, so let them do their weird thing they want to do. But, no, I think we're going to end up with some kind of shed thing from this, is what I'm thinking, is like, there's something that is going to come out of this that's going to bite us, just like when we make these changes, like the shed change and stuff, that's all.
Okay, let's move on to item D, resolution.
Wait, uh, parliamentary procedure, you don't vote on a tie? Is that not how our city works?
I'm sorry, you know what? I'm so used to not voting.
I thought, I thought, that's why you were asking for opinions, because you weren't sure how to vote, Carla, I mean, Mayor.
Miss, Mrs. Mayor, I urge you to vote no on this.
Okay, so I vote in favor, so, resolution passes. But, okay, sorry about that. Resolution R 2025-22, the creation of a fire station citizen advisory committee.
Okay, so one of the recommendations from Navigate is that we have a citizens, they call it a steering committee, the way our ordinance is set up, it's a citizens advisory committee. Just to, you know, give citizen input as we work our way through the process of designing this fire station. So we have this on the agenda to create the ordinance and then we have a, sorry, a resolution to create the committee. And then we have a following item that is a second resolution to appoint some members to that committee.
How are the committee members chosen?
Some just stakeholders, for example, you know, a council member that was the mayor. Don Watkins, you can, do you want?
So he's donating $250,000 towards the senior citizens center.
So there's that one, former mayor and resident, James Brown, we have him on here, this, there's going to have to be a hold on this one because he actually contacted me when he moved into town, he's an architect, he, he works for the church. Gave me some really good feedback on the fire station, he just said, hey, I want to serve. But he must be on vacation because his phone goes right to voicemail and he's not returning emails. But we hope that we can get him on here, I think his experience would be very helpful. Andy Spencer, resident, he's an engineer and local stakeholder to the project, yeah.
Well, and he lives right here.
Yeah, he provided some feedback to us already, and then just meat from staff, so.
I'll just speak in favor of Andy because he's been instrumental in helping us with our Main Street. And so when we try and like merge that, I think his insights would be very valuable.
There's no further discussion, I'll recommend, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I do, I do have a quick question. When I pulled this packet up, when it was sent to us, originally, I thought my name was on as the council representative, did that get changed?
It did. Chrissy was the one that gave the most feedback through the process, and so that was the name that was put forward. If you want to participate, you're more than welcome to attend. We just need to make sure, as you know, with the Open Public Meetings Act, that if there's more than two council people, we just need to notice it. But this will be the committee, but you are welcome to attend if you would like.
And then will this be noticed? Sorry, Brett.
Not unless we have to, so that's why it would be great if you guys can let us know.
And I think Jessica's experience working with the primetime group is valuable, so.
Well, also, I do commercial construction, that is, again, my day job, so I'm very familiar and understand the process.
I will just say as a general comment, the, we don't need any more committees, like, we, like, this is, you're, you're, you have the city council, you have the planning commission, you have these people that are members of the city, which you can talk to at any time. You don't need to form this committee, which will then have to be dissolved at some point.
This was something that was suggested by our.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of either of these committees, by the way.
This is something that was suggested by Chad, that we should have community involvement in the process since it's such a high-dollar project, that we wanted input.
Well, you're going to get input.
It was also, um.
It's one thing Alpine's good at, you'll get it.
When Babcock was approved, it was in their proposal as well, that there was a steering committee, if you remember that.
You don't need to form this formal committee.
We do.
To Kelly's point, I have a similar question, is like, why do we have these standing committees when we just needed, what I would call it, like a?
Ad hoc?
Ad hoc or a steering or something that's just project-specific? And Carla, would you, or Mayor, would you please explain to us why we go through this formality?
Because this is what's in our ordinance, we don't have any other definitions for ad hoc or task force or anything else. And so, and the committees, they're standing committee, but they can also be dissolved at any time, it's not that they're there forever. It's just a vehicle that we already have established, you know, whenever we come up with anything, it has to go through legal. So it's just kind of streamlined that we don't have, we're not racking up billables for, to differentiate between an ad hoc, task force, and a committee when it's essentially all the same thing.
Well, I think a standing committee like the Trails, like, is in perpetuity in the planning commission. But we do have project-specific, but if we don't have an ordinance that allows something like that, then I understand why we need this.
I just feel like, especially with the fire station and with the traffic, the, the Mountainville thing here, we're, we're kind of outsourcing, these are key things that are critical to the city. And city council, by forming these committees, is kind of outsourcing decision-making a little bit. And I don't, I don't feel like, I, Carla, I don't feel like this is actually making us get more feedback from the city. I think from residents, I think this is saying, we're going to take a couple of residents, we're going to get their opinions on things, and then it's going to come to the city council, but I think the city council should be more involved in these, especially these things in particular, than outsourcing to a committee. That's just my opinion.
Right, no, I totally get it. I think, you know, these are just advisory committees, so they can't make any decisions. By having council members there, their job is to bring it back to our city council meetings, which is every two weeks, except for the end of this year. But that you would get updated and, you know, go. And whenever we get any iterations from now on, that will be pushed to city council, so you guys will have that opportunity to give feedback. So, you know, as soon as, you know, Chad takes the inputs from today and we get a new iteration of the concept plan, we can push that out to city council, and then you guys are always welcome to give feedback directly.
I'm just going to voice also, although I feel like these are project-specific, we, we are very short stat, not short, we run a lean machine here, and we do have a lot of expertise in our community that we can lean on from time to time. Maybe it feels like more work for this staff, but I do feel like we do have, like, this person is an architect, things like that. Like Jessica said, she is in commercial building. Not only is Will a trail committee person, but he's, he uses water, you know, to run agricultural. So we have to lean on our citizens because we only have a handful of full-time employees.
Okay, I vote, we, we form a water committee, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
We have one.
We already have one.
We have one.
We have one.
It's not, no, but they're representing, it's, it's not a committee, it's slightly different than these guys.
No, they, they are a committee.
But that's what I'm saying.
And we have a represent, who's the, is it you or is it you, Kelly? I can't remember who's our water. Kelly's our water.
Power of the people.
Okay, so.
Mayor, I will just say, in our, in our committee ordinance, you won't find the word standing in there. So there's not a definition of standing committee in our ordinance. It just, it just says citizens advisory committee, and the council at any time by resolution can terminate a committee.
Right.
So, like, I'm thinking of the Sculpture Garden Committee. I don't see that as a permanent, I see that as through, you know, that project coming to fruition, and then it'll be, it'll be done. So I think it is semantics, if you want to move forward with the committee. I'm honestly okay either way, but it, it was a suggestion, I know on larger projects, that Navigate's worked on, they've done that, and, and it's worked well. But if the council doesn't want to do it, that's, that's fine too.
Well, let's have a vote.
Make a motion.
No, you probably don't want me to make the motion.
What? Chrissy, do you want to make the motion?
Oh, you're a brand.
Can you put that?
Oh, thank you, sorry, my glasses are not with me, sunglasses are, okay. Approved resolution, resolution R 2025-23, appointing members to the Alpine Fire Station Citizen Advisory Committee as proposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been proposed by Councilwoman Hanneman, seconded by Councilman Rummler. Any questions or discussions?
I'll just note that I, Kelly makes some good points, but because of the recommendation from the consultant, that's why I'm seconding the motion.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear a resolution 2025-22, creating the committee. We're just appointing members to a committee that hasn't been created yet, so.
We'll table that motion, we tabled the motion. Okay, here's another motion, review and approve resolution R 2022-25-22, establishing. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. I move to approve resolution R 2025-22, establishing Alpine Fire Station Citizen Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilwoman Hanneman, seconded by Councilman Rummler. Any further discussion on creation of the committee? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Brett Rummler, yes.
Kelly Law, no.
Jessica Smeon, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Let's move on to. Yes. So do you want to untable that?
I'd like to untable the motion. Dash 23.
I think you can call the vote now.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, yeah, I'm not sure how the whole tabling thing goes within the same meeting.
I don't think you voted on tabling the motion.
Yeah, I don't think we did.
So I would just make it.
Do you want to just make a new motion?
I would make a new motion.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I see. Now we're on 23. I move to approve resolution R 2025-23, appointing members to the Alpine Fire Station Citizen Advisory Committee as proposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilwoman Hanneman, seconded by Councilman Rummler. Any further questions or discussion? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Brett Rummler, yes.
Kelly Law, no.
Jessica Smeon, yes.
Okay, resolution R 2025-23 passes. Let's move on to item F, resolution R 2025-24.
Okay, this, this item was put on the agenda, the amended agenda yesterday. It's been proposed that we have a, based on our ordinance, a citizens advisory committee. It was proposed to be a task force, but we don't have a mechanism for that. To try to fix traffic issues caused by the Mountainville Academy. There's a lot of things going on down there, we have their traffic study that was submitted as part of the package to try to get a new building approved. We actually hired a consultant to review that study. We had a meeting with them last week and we were actually very impressed with this company, it was Farr and Pierce. They did a great job in their review and had some really good comments and are asking Hells Engineering, who prepared the Mountainville study, for some additional information and, and to address some things. So once that's finalized, we'll report back to the council on it.
We, we got that back, yes.
Oh, you did.
Final back yesterday, so we're just sending it out for, for review amongst.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we have the Main Street study going on, and there's emails going around, I just received one, I think, about scheduling a meeting to review that. So there's a lot of different things going on. I'll just throw this in here, and I was going to do it in communication, but we did talk to Farr and Pierce about the possibility of putting in a temporary median with these posts, just to see how everything reacts and what it does to neighborhoods and different things like that. They thought it would be a great idea. We've got a couple of products to consider if, if we want to move forward with that. So I think the idea here was to get some stakeholders together, both from the school, the citizens, some professionals, and try to come up with something that helps the issue. So that's what is proposed here. There are, there's a misspelled word and a reference to the fire station committee that has been corrected, but not in what you have in front of you. The one Deanne has is, has been corrected, so.
How does this?
Yes, go ahead.
How does this impact the academy's timeline for their building and such? Is it going to delay their, their goals?
Ryan, can you go over the planning commission motion?
Yeah, I just had their motion too, and then I put it in the other room. Yeah, so part of, part of the motion that the planning commission made, that they, that Mountainville would need to do, is they need to come back with additional ideas or thoughts from their board around traffic. I'm trying to think, well, I've got it in the other room, I can, I can share their motion they made too, but there's a couple of things that they had to do. One of them, one of the, they had to wait for the Farr and Pierce one that Shane just talked about, they had to wait for the, for our Main Street traffic, our Main Street master plan traffic side of that, and then they just had a couple of things that they needed to do on their end. We haven't received anything back from them yet to, to keep going. But yeah, I think it's a good, good plan to move forward, but I don't, I don't know if it'll impact it that much. But hopefully, I think the thought process is to kind of speed up that process, but.
I apologize, I haven't had a chance to review the last planning, I was out of the country the last three weeks, so I don't know if you have any chance to review that.
Did you have any comments, Chrissy? This was your brainchild.
Yes, it definitely was. What I, what I, in working with Dan and also in talking to the people at Mountainville, both the Board of Trustees and the administration, I realized there's some things that are impacting our traffic situation that are 100% in their control, like their staging, their school time, their, just so many things are impacting our traffic situation that are under their, 100% under their control. And then some of the things that we can control, like, you know, whether we do a median or these type of things, are going to have a big impact on what's going on, on their property. So we, we do need to coordinate our efforts because that, we, we do need to make some changes and we, we need to all be informed on the changes, and then how do we even communicate with their parents? Because it's their parents, their cars that are stacked up on our streets. We have no way to communicate with their parents because many of them are not residents of the city. So how do we even communicate? Well, we're going to have to rely on the school to do that. So the whole idea of this particular project was to open those doors of communication so that as we're implementing changes, whatever they may be on our side, we get the parents are aware and they know what they, how can they adjust to that? Vice versa, they're making some adjustments on their site plan, you know, we've seen, the planning commission solved the proposal and stuff like that. And that will impact our city in a big way. So we just have to start that communication and the dialogue and keep us all moving in the same direction. And then there's the point which I think Mr. Jones brought up about enforcement. Like, we can have a great plan, but if we don't get enforcement from the police or, you know, as much as we, if it needs to be some other way of enforcement, it's hard to be successful if there's no enforcement. So I, I just felt like these were the stakeholders, we, and then of course, us lay citizens don't know that much about traffic, right? Other than we don't like it. So how can we solve these problems? Like Shane said, we need a professional. So getting all these people just at the same table to sort of digest it all and communicate, again, with the parents, we have to rely on the school. So even if, whether or not the building is approved or not approved or whatever direction we go, like, we, we have to communicate with parents, and we have no means to do that. That was my first original thought, which is where we're landing in this, how can we get all these people in one place? Whether or not this is approved by the city council, I still think a group of citizens can, can talk about our problems and then report back to those who are in charge. So we're going to move forward with or without you guys, like, we're going to meet and talk about what can the school do and what can the city do, and then come back with our ideas. This is just giving, like, there's. This is just giving, like, their stamp of approval that we embrace that idea.
It sounds a little bit like abdicating responsibility to this committee, which again is why I am against this committee. So last year, with a different board, we had meetings with the school board and the staff and city council members to discuss traffic and issues with the purchase of the One Hundred South property. And basically, that board at that time said, "Traffic's the city's problem" and wasn't willing to work with us. So, but it sounds like this new board is a little bit more amenable to working with the city. Why can't we just kind of do what we did last time with a meeting with the board as opposed to forming an official committee? It doesn't sound like this is gonna be, I mean. I don't know. I would like to get your input as well. I mean, that's what we did last year without forming a committee. I thought it was, it was productive in a way that we kind of expressed our desires, what the city's goals were. We let the school board express theirs. It ultimately didn't resolve because they weren't willing to really work with us. Your thought on that?
Yeah, what initially comes to mind is, you know, they talk about addictions and different things and the first step to getting over a problem is admitting you have a problem. In some past discussions that I've been involved with, with the school, they don't feel like they have a problem. And, you know, we've heard, "Oh, it's, traffic's only due to growth." Well, I guess the growth only comes during the school year. In the summer, it's okay because we don't have the same issue in the afternoon. Something definitely needs to be done. You know, it's a complaint that citizens have all the time. I think a meeting, maybe where we're at a different time and place, like was discussed. Maybe we start with a meeting with the school, with some representatives of the city, representative, representatives of the school. We have their study. We have the review from our consultant. Maybe we kind of start that way. If you don't want to do a, a committee right now, see how it goes and then reevaluate that after a meeting or series of meetings.
I see on here that, the mayor, you're the petitioner on this? Is that, did you have it, or just because Chrissy asked?
No, Chrissy asked and I was gone, as you guys know, until recently, and she wanted it on the agenda right away. And so I pushed for it to go through yesterday. I didn't push back on Chrissy and ask her for another person. I always think conversation is a good thing. There have been things that have changed since the last time we met with Mountainville. You know, there's been new discovery that we will be talking about in the executive session. So that would facilitate more open dialogue, let's put it that way.
So do you think a committee is, is, is a better option than just having a meeting with?
No, not necessarily. I actually like the idea of waiting until we get, you know, the results of the traffic study and the results of the discovery of the last planning commission meeting and moving forward. That basically found out that they are out of compliance with their bulk amassing. And then I think the traffic study will also address the issue with how many cars are brought forth by that, which would compel the school to also have a secondary egress, which they don't currently have. There's a lot of other things like that, but we don't know that information yet. So it, you know, I, I don't think it would be bad for us to wait to have all that information. Yet at the same time, I understand that Chrissy wants to get the dialogue started right away. They can start with genetic, you know, generic, generic information. I think she was, I think Shane had a good idea to suggest that Jason, our city engineer, be on the committee. So he, you know, we have somebody from staff that understands traffic. So, yeah, I mean, to me, it could go either way. Like I said, I think having a dialogue is never a bad thing. And if you can create those relationships, it does make it easier. You know, you're talking about speaking with their citizens. I have had several meetings with their principal and I believe Kelly has also. We've sat together and separately. We've expressed our concerns and they have communicated with the parents. It's just the parents choose not to follow the recommendation of the school. So they do have messaging coming from the school that we've worked with them on. It's just up to the parents whether they want to follow that or not. So, you know, I guess in a way, we're looking for ways to, I think you're always gonna have people who are gonna do what they want, is that what's the best way that we can guide them to have the best results? Like I said, communication is never a bad thing, but at some point, there's always gonna be people, unless their hand is forced, that, you know, maybe it won't work. I don't know.
Originally, I liked this idea when it was a task force because it was, you know, community members and problem, you know, with problem solving and, and Mountainville representatives coming forward to have the conversation. I'm a little uncomfortable with it as a committee because sometimes it gives the appearance of things that in those meetings are consensus. You know, like you mentioned before, there was an attitude about, "It's not our problem" when there were those meetings. And I'm not sure if that was the entire, you know, group of Mountainville representatives, but it came across as a unified message. So, if, if we could keep it as a task force and not a resolution-formed committee from Alpine City, I would be more in favor of that.
So you're saying, okay, so then we don't need to create this if Chrissy's doing this not as an official city council person? Or what do you, what do you mean by a task force as opposed to a committee? To me, it's just semantics.
Well, it's actually being authorized by the city in this way. A task force is people invested in solutions and, and working and talking towards those solutions.
I agree with Jessica. That's where we, that's where I originally just wanted is, can we just get some help? And have someone from the police department, someone from the staff help us? And that the, not necessarily make it an official assignment by any means or a, a committee per se. But the word came back, we really don't have a way of doing that. So, that's kind of where we ended up here.
Well, if you don't want something that's attached to the city, then why have staff and the police officers? I mean, they're obviously a separate entity, you know, the Lone Peak Public Safety. More than welcome, but as far as having staff members and staff support, that automatically implies that it's city-supported. So to me, it's just, I, I guess, to me, it's all semantics. You either have a group of people that are working and, you know, it's, it's a committee and it's approved by the city. If that's not what you want, but then I don't think you should be expecting support from.
But we need, we need them.
I know. So then why not have the committee then? I don't understand, like.
Because I think it gives us aura, like the city's in charge, but it's really not. No, like, all three people are, or all three or four stakeholders are all like equally weighted. Because like I said, they have control over the things that we don't have.
Right.
So like, we're not in charge. The city is not in charge.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to getting together. I think that's great, to get together and try and find solutions that work better for everybody. I was just, my question was, last year, we just had a meeting. We didn't form a committee. We just met with them. We had staff there. We talked about the ordinances and requirements. We bought this property and we can trade properties. And it just didn't come to fruition after two months of labor. Seems like the new board is more amenable. Probably part of that is they want to build a STEM building and they have some more motivation to work with the city. So I'm just, my question is, should we just have more meetings like with last year and try and work it out? Or do we need to form a, a committee?
I, I'm not opposed to not forming a committee.
Carl, I think one, one thing though, I would say is Chrissy is a city council member. The, the Lone Peak Safety District and the city staff are paid by the city. She represents the citizens of the city who pay them, so she could request them to help. Like, you were like, "You can't get them to help if you don't have a committee." No, she totally can.
Well, no, no, no. What I'm saying is like, to me, it sounded like, "Well, we don't want the city involved, but we do." Does that make sense?
Well, I don't want it to sound, seem like the city's like spearheading it when it's really, it's really Dan who's, like, this is, and I'm just saying, "Well, who else do we need to help us?" Because I don't know enough about traffic and I don't know. You know, I just don't, we don't have the, Dan and I, this is not our area of expertise. We're like, "Who else can we get to help us?" Was like really the objective and it's just did mushroom into something beyond the scope of what I think I, I personally intended. I can't speak for Dan, but.
That's why I think we have, we have a process. It's, there's, there's a planning commission. There's a city council. There's city staff. There's public safety people. Like, we, we should be addressing this. This is like the top one or two issues in the city. It's been going forever. Like, we should be addressing this anyway. I don't know that, like, like what, a committee and you're gonna put other people on there. And granted, it's great to cooperate with the school. I think we should do that. But I, but I would not like a member of the school board driving the traffic decisions on a, on a citizen traffic committee, right? So like, you know, I, I think there is a, there's a, there's a benefit here to having a little bit of distance and a little bit of an adversarial type of thing. It's not, it's not, doesn't have to be like mean or anything. But, yeah, we, we, we've dealt with this, with the school for a long time. We've tried everything. Talking and all that kind of stuff has been great and we haven't gotten really anywhere. We need to, we need to come up with some actions as a city that we will do to mitigate the traffic for our citizens. That's what we need to do.
Thank you for those words and I, and I, I embrace what you're saying. I also watched the planning commission meeting where they spoke about to the people who are proposing, the architect and all those people, to the changes to their property. And the feedback from the planning commission was very direct that until you like make some effort to work on parking, like, we're not sure why you're coming to ask us for all these exceptions when you haven't really worked on parking. So, there is a change in their, their interest in our traffic issues because now we both want something, right? So I do feel like, like that's a change from what you experienced before. It doesn't even have to be a different process. But I, I think everybody's more interested in finding a resolution because they both, we, we both want something.
Well, I probably will not be on the city council when this finally comes to the city council, but I would urge all new city council members, whoever they, that, those may be, and any existing city council members to say no to any exceptions. To address the traffic problem first. And we should, we should not be making any exceptions at this point.
You're echoing the, the direction from the planning commission. Ryan, you, you were there, so you can speak to it. So, I, I believe that's why there's more interest than there has been in the past.
Exactly. So, my thought is, let's get the information we need from the engineers, understand what the, about the massing and parking, get all those requirements, and then let's meet with them and say, "Here, these are your goals. These are our objectives. Let's find a solution." I would like to be a participant.
So let's make a motion. You can deny this and let's move forward. We've got an executive session we need to go into. So let's move on if there's no further discussion.
I'll move to deny the resolution R. 2025-24 based on a decision that we don't have all the information yet related to the proposed STEM building and how that affects things and how we can maybe work towards a meeting with the school board as opposed to forming a committee.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Rummler, seconded by Councilman Law. Any discussion? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Brent Rummler, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Jessica Smian, yes.
Okay, so do we need to go on to item G then? I think we can just move on.
It's on the agenda. I think we probably need a motion just to.
Okay, let's move on to item G, resolution R. 2025-25, which was.
I move to deny resolution R. 2025-23.
Okay, is there a second?
Twenty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Law, seconded by Councilwoman Hanneman. Any discussion? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Brent Rummler, yes.
Kelly Law, yes.
Jessica Smian, yes.
Okay, let's move on to staff reports. Ryan?
I just have two. The Main Street master plan draft, we're, we got it back, the, those have been working on it. If you could get back to me, if you haven't, on what time you want to meet next week, then we can, we can go over that. Really excited to get that moving forward.
Ryan, can you stop? Are you wanting to meet with us first and then with them?
No, we're all gonna meet together.
Okay, that's, okay. I was, thank you.
And if you could give me comments you have beforehand, then I can, we can kind of go over those. But yeah, so we'll, we'll get this out through this initial one and then I think we'll send it to the rest of the council for feedback and thoughts as well, so. And then MAG is coming out with another, it's the TAG grant, Technical Advisory Grant. They're coming out with a new cycle on that. The, well, the, the initial application is due on Friday, but we just have to give them an idea for what we want to do. Our, our initial plan was to go for a grant to update city code. Some of them, the, most of them, the ordinances start with a nineteen, which means they're kind of old and need to be updated. So, we just want to have an applica, or a, like, I can't think of the term. We just need, want, and have help through a grant to, to update those and see if there's any changes to be best practice and then in compliance with state code and everything that way.
So are there no other projects around the city that would qualify under the tag?
These are, these are very planning, technical.
Are they?
And this is, policy and zoning is one of the ones that they say they could do, so. That's just one of the ones with that. So, we'll be going for that. We'll keep you updated, but that's the only two things. Just wanted to make everyone aware that we'd like to go for that, so.
Shane?
Okay, just a quick update on some projects. As I mentioned, our Canyon, Canyon Crest PI project will be bidding soon. How, how many will be out of town the week? We don't have a meeting scheduled for the fourteenth for the evening. I was wondering, so we could get this project moving forward, if we could maybe have a consent calendar meeting at noon that day or a different day that week, just to award some bids and keep things moving instead of waiting till the twenty-eighth? If we were able to get a quorum. Be awesome if we could.
I'm, I'm here, but I leave the fifteenth, so it'd have to be the fourteenth.
Okay.
Kelly, would you, will you be around? Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll send something out since at least one member's not here tonight. Like I said, it'd just be consent calendar and something quick, so. Our paving project should be finished tomorrow. It's actually went very, very, very well. Lot of hours and everything for our guys, but it looks great. Citizen feedback's been good and we've had very few issues. Silco projects are complete. Fairview Circle Storm drains, like ninety-five, maybe even ninety-nine percent complete. You approve the change order. We'll have them move to the other side of town, probably right from that project to there and get it going and buttoned up before the fall weather hits.
Hey Shane, real quick, on, on Hog Hollow, they resurfaced that, I think. Was that Hog Hollow or Lupine?
The six, six hundred North Hog Hollow Road, yeah.
So, there's some, I guess, you know, I don't need to say this, but they just took some of the old manhole rings and stuff and plopped them by that city well building or whatever that is.
So, this company, they don't use those anymore, so they were gonna throw them away. Atlanta said, "If you're gonna throw them away, can we have them?" So you don't have to buy them. So he probably had them, put them there temporarily until we could gather them up.
Okay.
Because it's several thousand dollars worth of rings, so, yeah, that's, that's why. I'll say the paving will be wrapped up tomorrow, but then raising manholes and valves and stuff will follow. And they're, they've been working through that, probably down in Chrissy's area even, on the project, so. We have some other things that have came in that are just waiting for our manpower to help get them installed, like drinking fountains, the sign for the roundabouts at the shop. The pavilion is, should be getting, we don't have it yet, but it should be very close to being finished. We're gonna, once these things are wrapped up, get. We're gonna, once these things are wrapped up, get the concrete work done for that, as well as the benches. Um, we don't have the benches here yet, but I expect them any, any day. Um, so if you have any, I know we have some locations that specifically were mentioned in Burgess Park for benches. If you have any specific, I'm gonna be walking through with the guys soon to locate those so they can get them ready. I know there are some by the tennis courts and that playground, and then along the trail. Um, I can't even remember off the top of my head how many we ordered, but there were several, so. So if I could say, get back to me, I'll be at a conference tomorrow, but you could email me preferably by tomorrow, if you can, or Thursday even. We've talked a lot about the fire station project, just, I think, a lot of good things moving, moving forward and happening. Um, I, we did have a question come up on canceling, what it takes to cancel a city council meeting. We don't have anything in our ordinance that specifies, you know, how it is or is not done. Um, there's not really anything in state code. I've, I had Steve take a look at it. We canceled the last meeting. We didn't have any agenda items, so we'd be meeting, you know, pulling everybody here, um, really for no reason, so. Some city ordinances have a provision in there, what it takes to cancel a meeting, but we don't. So if you want us to do something on that, please let us know. Let's see. I think that's it.
Okay. Brett?
It's 3:30. My body time's flagging for Monday, and I'm, I have nothing.
Okay. Kelly?
Mayor, you were gonna get something from the Orem Mayor or something like that? Whatever happened with that?
Oh, yeah, no, that's already been released. So they did, so all the mayors did, um, a letter to the, um, Charlie's family right before the funeral, and then, um, they put a press release out on Friday.
Okay. Cool. Thanks for doing that. I, I guess I need to look that up. I thought we, I thought we would do something here, but, um, just in general, uh, I was actually surprisingly very upset. Not just like, "Oh, that's so bad," but like, extremely upset that a citizen of our state assassinated basically a world leader, a world influencer in our state. And, um, so I'm trying to contain what, how I feel to be logical, which is a little difficult. But, you know, I, uh, what was more upsetting to me was the amount of people that I saw celebrating, including people in our city, celebrating an assassination. And basically saying, you know, "This person got what they deserved." And, um, it, it kinda goes to where, where we're at right now in this state. And I think that we have some, have somehow, a lot of people in the state have crossed the line from thinking, uh, to be compassionate for one group, you have to hate another group, which is never the right, never the right thing. And just to be a little political, I noticed that Governor Cox is gonna be at the TPUSA meeting at Utah State, and I hope some people there ask him some serious questions. You know, the, the, uh, he's vetoed some things that, that would've kinda set straight, set some things right, um, in the state with regards to, um, certain ideologies, um, when it comes to girls having to unfairly participate against boys in sports and other things. He's perpetuated, um, some things with using his platform to, um, promote the use of pronouns with children. And so I hope he does some soul searching. He's the executor of the state. The indoctrination of this person took place in our schools, in our state. The lack of, even looking at the rooftops in this facility took place, you know, under his watch. And so I hope, I hope he can take a little bit, I mean, I'm not saying he's responsible for this stuff, but take a little bit of accountability and look at some of the things that he's done to perpetuate these issues that occur in our state. Thanks.
Chrissy?
Um, yeah, we had, um, a really good day of service. I don't know how many of you guys were in town, but I was very impressed. Um, I went to, down to Lone Peak. It was my first time participating, I admit. And they had a very, um, appropriate music speaker. Um, they talked about 9/11, and they had, um, people from the Lone Peak Fire, um, Lone Peak Safety District, both fire and police, and they also Pleasant Grove participating. So it was a really, um, I guess because they are over Cedar Hills, is that why Pleasant Grove's over there? Anyway, side tour, okay. Anyways, it was a very good event, and I felt like, um, it was a really good way to carry, you know, a tragic event that happened in our, in our country and, and, and turn it into something positive in our community. I spent time at Peterson Park, and, um, I can't wait to get the master plan for that park, because the entire time we were cutting out the willow, what, what are the cotton wood tree, um, suckers everywhere? The entire, like, the conversation was, "Well, these are just gonna come back. So, so what's the big, what's the long-term plan?" And I didn't have an answer for them. Um, so I'd love to know what our long-term plans are for that park, because, but overall, just a great, a great day. Um, lots of kids involved, lots of teenagers working, um, and, and just a great event. So I'm grateful for those who organized it and supported it, like, especially, our chiefs aren't here, but they, we were well represented. And then, um, you're probably gonna bring it up, the Utah League of City of Towns, but I did register for Wednesday, and there is a water state, a water study class, which I feel like I need, considering how much we're gonna talk about water. And other good, very good classes that, um, would help us understand and be better prepared for what's coming. Um, specifically, there's another class on ADUs, which I guess there's a state law change, which Ryan will keep us informed of, um, when it comes our time to update our ordinances. So just encourage anyone who has time to go. I will be there only Wednesday, um, and I hope to see you there.
Jessica?
Nothing.
Okay. Chrissy, did you have a motion?
I have a motion that we move to closed session. We have, um, okay, oh, gosh, I need my glasses again. I'm gonna read this. I'm sorry, my glasses.
It's the first.
That are not, um, sunglasses that have, anyways, here we go. To discuss litigation, property acquisition, and...
I think that's it.
And disposition?
Yes.
Okay, those three things. In the conference room behind the cham-, the council chambers. And at the end of the meeting, we will vote to adj, close the meeting and adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Hanneman, seconded by Councilman Law. Um, let's proceed with the roll call vote.
Chrissy Haneman, yes.
Brent Rumler, yes. Kelly Law, yes.
Jessica Smiun, yes.
Okay, five-minute bio break.